Sixteenth, couple of the national meeting of Louisville City Council Board. We do have a forum present. We'll start with the workshop session.
Our first work, our workshop tonight is the presentation of the 2017 CAFR report. And our finance director, as well as our external auditor will give the presentation tonight. Basically, we got a thing called health and they issued an unmodified opinion, so good news for Louisville.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I introduce our audit partner that was on our engagement, I'd like to recognize two people really that was instrumental this year on the audit. This was a year which I kind of stepped aside and said, you know, someone else needs to do the audit and put together the report besides me. And so Renee Pennella, she's not here tonight. Her father passed away yesterday. She really wanted to be here but was unable to. But she and her staff just took over the audit this year. For those of you who've been around a while, we struggled to get it to you the second meeting in March and we're here. This is the first meeting in March and you're looking at the CAFR and accepting it. So we're very proud of that. Her right-hand person is a lady that is here, Heather Potting. She comes to us, she used to work for Plano and I feel like we stole her because she has been instrumental in our processes and shooting lining and getting us just up to speed, really adding value and a knowledge base there in our accounting group that we are very proud of and certainly was part of the reason we're here before you tonight. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce John DeBurro. He's our audit partner with Weber and he'll go over the results of the audit for you.
Thanks Brenda and thanks everyone for inviting me to speak with you this evening. I'm John DeBurro, I'm the audit partner that Brenda mentioned. And before I begin, I'd just like to take just a moment to thank Brenda, Renee, Heather, and the rest of the finance department for all their hard work in making this a very successful audit. I want to go over the results of the fiscal year 2017 audit and I've got a few things to go over with you. I'll give you a brief introduction to myself and our audit team that conducted the audit. We'll go over the audit results, which I'm sure you want to hear, and go over a little bit of the required communications that we have to have. I'll talk a little bit about the strength and accomplishments of the finance department. Then I have some slides to go through, some financial highlights with numbers derived directly from this year and last year's CAFR. And during my presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I'm getting used to this. I'm not a high-tech guy, but that is me. For those of you who aren't familiar with our firm, we're actually the largest CPA firm that's headquartered out of the southwest and we're among the top 50 firms in the country. We do a lot of municipalities and school districts and the like. Joining myself as part of the audit team this year was Allison Homer, who was a new person to our firm. She came with quite a bit of government experience. She led the crew and there were also a couple of audit associates that joined her and Jerry Gaither, the former partner, acted as the technical reviewer. And I like this slide just because it shows that we're not your audit firm for just a day or a week. We're your audit firm around the clock all year long because we start planning this year's audit back in June. We came out in August to perform interim field work, which generally consists mostly of internal control work where we go through and we look at the city's significant transaction cycles like cash disbursements, payroll, cash receipts and such. And we can understand that the processes and then we identify internal controls and if we'd seen any weaknesses, we'd identify those and bring those to management's attention as well. But thankfully, we didn't see any weaknesses in internal control. And then we actually take transactions, we walk through the transactions just so that we have a comfortable that the controls are identified, are in place and acting as designed. Then we all, screen. Then when we came back in January to perform our final field work, we use a combination of techniques. We'll use audit sampling, we'll use analytical procedures on some balances and then we'll vouch certain significant transactions back to the source documentation. We also performed the single audit and I'll go into that a little bit in just a moment. But we issued our audit opinion last week on February 27th and here before you this evening and in between tonight and next year. I always make myself and my staff available to Brenda and her staff to answer any questions because oftentimes when you need the assistance is when the transactions taking place, not at the audit. So we always like to make ourselves available to the decisions. I did? Okay. This slide gives you just a summary of the financial statement audit. We have issued for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2017, an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements, which means that we feel that they're fairly presented in all material respects and which would generally accept it accounting principles. Also, we reported on internal control of the financial reporting and showed no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no acts of non-compliance that were material to the financial statements. So it's a very clean opinion. It was a very successful audit. This slide provides summary information on the single audit. Conducted a single audit of the city's federal financial assistance and the major program this year was the Community Development Block Grant, which had a little over $1.22 million in federal expenditures this past year. And again, we issued an unmodified opinion on the city's compliance with major federal financial assistance program requirements. We also identified no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in controls or compliance. So once again, a very clean opinion. We're also required to communicate to you any audit adjustments that are made that are significant to the financial statements, whether they are made or not made, if we were to pass on any. But I'm happy to report that there were no uncorrected misstatements and there were no significant audit adjustments made as a result of our audit procedures. These are presentations I like when it's all good news. I won't go through all these, but if you want me to, stop me and I'll go through some of these. But this section of this slide goes through management's estimates. We're required to communicate to you information about significant estimates that are embodied in the financial statements and we listed out here three of four that are more significant than others. The net pension liability, the estimated useful lives for capital assets, that's an estimate that's used to calculate depreciation on the capital assets, the incurred but not reported workers' compensation health and dental claims in the Internal Service Fund, the allowance for uncollectible taxes and other receivables. And we went through and we looked at the underlying assumptions for each one of these estimates and felt that they were reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. We also noted that the city adopted a new accounting policy this year. It's known as GASB-77, which is the OPEB, I'm sorry, GASB-77, which is the tax abatement disclosures. And it requires certain things to be disclosed in the financial statements and the footnotes to the financial statements for any tax abatements that are issued by the city. There were no material errors, no difficulties or disagreements in conducting our audit. The next series of slides go through some financial highlights and the first two slides will cover the governmental funds revenues. And overall, as you can see, the fiscal year 2017 revenues and the governmental funds totaled $139.3 million and that was a $14.9 million increase over previous year. And most of this is attributable to the net effect of a couple of things that were going on. One was a $13.4 million increase in contributions. That was really the contribution of bond proceeds from the Castle Hills pit. There was also a $6.4 million increase in tax revenues and an $8 million decrease in intergovernmental revenues. The decrease in intergovernmental revenues was really federal tax cut and Devon County. In the previous year, you would receive quite a bit of money toward capital projects. So that was really the net effect of those. You can see obviously that this largest portion of the city's revenues come from property taxes and others, which is 61% of the overall governmental revenues. This slide just gives you a little bit further detail of the revenue sources of the city and you can see here, for instance, the $6.4 million increase in property taxes. You can see here the $8 million decrease in intergovernmental revenues and the $13.4 million increase in contributions. And in a similar way, the next two slides will present information on the city's governmental expenditures. And overall, the city's governmental expenditures totaled $132.2 million and that was a 4.4% increase. There wasn't really one thing that stood out. There were increases in various areas, such as public safety, that was 3.9 million, public and development services of 2.9, general government of 2.4, and debt service of 1.9, and culture and rap of a million. So it wasn't one overarching reason for the increase. It was kind of across the board. And capital outlay did decrease by $7.7 million this year as there was a little bit increased capital project that's going to be compared to previous year. And again, these just give you side-by-side comparisons of this year and last year by function as far as where the expenditure increase and decrease at work. This slide gives you some information about the city's governmental funds, fund balance. And as of fiscal year end, fund balance of the funds totaled $131.5 million. The largest portion is in the capital projects fund right now, $57.7 million, $40.2 million in the general fund. And overall, the governmental funds, fund balance increased by $26.4 million and that was primarily due to increases in both the general capital projects fund of $14 million and $13.3 million increase in the Castle Hills pit capital projects fund. And finally, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is a good indicator of strength of the city in the operating fund. It was $39 million and that represents 51.2% of general fund expenditures. Which is very good. This slide gives you some information on the general fund budgetary comparison. In the CAFR, there's a schedule that provides information on the general fund showing both the original and amended budget and then the actual revenues and expenditures. And overall, the general fund had a favorable budgetary variance of $8.7 million. And this is kind of twofold. On the revenue side of things, revenues came in at $5.6 million more than budgeted. And this is a couple of the more significant components of the revenue positive variance here. Tax charges were $3.6 million more than estimated and charges for service were $1.2 million more than estimated. On the other side of things with expenditures, actual expenditures came in under budget by $2.6 million or 3.0%. And that was primarily due to salary savings from vacancies. And final financial highlight slide that I have deals with the city's utility fund. And overall, the net position of the utility fund increased $5 million during fiscal year 2017, primarily due to a $4.5 million operating income. Operating revenues increased $1.1 million due to a 3.5% rate increase. And operating expenses also increased $2.1 million primarily due to a $600,000 increase in the cost of audit purchases as well as increases in administrative and depreciation Like I said, it was a very successful audit and as Brenda mentioned, I think Heather and Renee did an excellent job of helping put together the CAFR this year and everybody was very cooperative in providing everything that we needed. As a result, there were no material weaknesses in internal controls, no compliance findings or material weaknesses in internal controls or compliance for the federal assistance programs, and no significant audit adjustments or past adjustments. And once again, last year's CAFR received the GFOA award for achievement excellence in financial reporting. And I won't bore you with the details of these, but there are, GASB's continuing to be very, very busy putting out new accounting pronouncements and the next one, GASB-75, will deal with OPEB similar to what happened a few years ago with requiring a net pension liability being recorded in the city's financials for the first time. Now, OPEB liability is going to have to be recorded in a similar manner and we'll work with Brenda and her staff to make sure that that and any other pronouncements are properly implemented again next year. That really won't have any bearing, but it's another gathering pronouncement. But with that, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
If I have any questions? Thank you.
That's a good one.
That was good. Claire? What else do we have to know?
We're just doing regular agenda items that come through.
Okay. First item is invocation given by myself, followed by the pledge to the American Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones. Then we have public hearing, item one. Any questions? Item two. Another public hearing. Now we're down to consent agenda. Number three, minutes. Number five, same type of agreement, another ED agreement. Six.
Mayor, I did want to point out that we have gone through an extensive farm work since it passes then, as you can see in Keith's memo, for determining our best value for custodial services. We do have Francis here if you have any questions about that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we got to, item seven. And item 10.
Mayor, based, this is actually a really cool project and I wanted to have Jordan Strickler come up and kind of talk about what we're going to be doing in the second phase that could be potential for this with our neighborhood services programs, which I think she has a few slides as well that she wanted to show you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to talk a little bit about our grant application. Public Services Tonight is seeking an approval of a resolution for a solid waste grant project application. And this resolution tonight is the final piece to complete our application for this project. So every two years, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality allocates funding generated by landfill tipping fees to the state of Texas's 24 councils of governments. And our council of governments actually has about $660,000 that they are giving out for the next two years on these solid waste grants. So for us, one of the problems that our facility has been facing recently is paint disposal. So our paint disposal, our contract came up for renewal in November and November came back and wanted to increase our cost by 30%. We rejected that offer, we went back out for bid, our bids came back even higher than that 30%. We only received two bids, not bids, not including the company that we were originally using. So we began to explore other options and one of the ways that we could reduce our costs was by bulking paint. Now, the purchase of a bulking machine is fairly expensive. It's about $36,000, the one that we are looking at purchasing. So to kind of be creative about getting those funds, we went out for a grant with the North Central Texas Council of Governments. So I have some pictures of, I guess, the items that we're looking at getting. So currently, right now, our process is our residents bring in that paint to our household hazardous waste, the residential convenience center on Jones Street. We package those up in cubic yard waste boxes and they pretty much go to a landfill. So they go to a separate landfill, Turkey Creek landfill, and it doesn't matter if the paint cans are full, it doesn't matter if they're empty, they just get separated between latex and oil and they get placed into our boxes for disposal. So we're looking at purchasing a paint can crusher and aerosol crusher. So these crushers basically would puncture the can and with pressure applied, the paint would fall into the container below. So like Claire's talking about, this will give us an opportunity to capture that paint, mix it back together, and then offer an opportunity for reuse, possibly through our Neighbors Leading Neighbors program or through the Together with Louisville Coalition. Some of the other interesting items that we're looking at incorporating into our program. Currently, when our residents come, we ask for a license or a water bill and we handwrite all the information, we write down what they bring us. We would be incorporating these car readers and the computer tablets. So we would be able to scan licenses and it would automatically populate that information into forms. And we would be able to look at what areas of Louisville are bringing us materials, what kinds of materials they're bringing to us, do some education outreach about proper ways of disposal, especially in areas that are maybe underserved. So the paint can crusher, we actually did a field trip to City of Frisco, they use this. Here they are, they're loading up the paint cans. We also are looking at another option that would have a conveyor that would kind of convey them up. But like I said, it would puncture the can, goes into the drum below, and then as a side, the cans, we could actually recycle after the paint dries. So we would be reducing the volume that would be going to landfill, reducing our disposal costs. And through the program, currently, right now, we're recommended for full funding on our grant project, which is great. Not all the projects that apply were recommended for full funding, but the pending completion of our application is the resolution before you tonight. And then a final approval by the Resource Conservation Council, the North Texas Council of Government Executive Board, and the TCEQ.
I have a question. I do have a question. Are the, is latex and oil, are they both, are they mixture or are they separate?
No, we would still keep them separate. Basically, we'd probably just bulk the latex. We'd probably continue to dispose of our oil in the same manner that we do now.
Okay, and then how are cans that are just dried, dried out? Are those kept separate in this case or if it's dry paint, you know, if the can is dried, which we find, as somebody who spends every once a month there, a lot of the paint comes in dried out. And of course, that will not be able to be reclaimed because.
Right. Current landfill, like if it's dried completely and we can't get that latex out, we would just put it in the trash. It's acceptable by our landfill to get that way. But if there's any liquid paint, we'd be able to kind of reclaim that and then recycle that can.
That's a little bit more work at that point than what it is now because now we just blow the can, all the cans would at the same time.
Correct. We would, we would have to dedicate some more staff time to bulking that paint, but it does give us an opportunity for reuse and reducing what we spend at the, for disposal fees and also reducing our footprint as far as what we're sending to the landfill.
Good question. With the data, being able to capture that, do we, or have we thought about how we can maybe capture the folks that are abusing the system? Because we have some businesses, guaranteed, small businesses, that are using, overusing the system.
So with that, we will be able to, we'll be able to track all kinds of analytics, often the data that we get, addresses, like I said, if we see somebody's bringing 30 cans of paint every month or bringing a large television every month or, you know.
That's not a hit, that's a win.
Yeah.
So we can look at that and use that for analytics.
So as we unload the cars, will we still be doing a survey to Keith's, who knows where it's there? Is that going to be on the tablet?
Correct. So we bought, we asked to purchase two tablets, one that will go to the coordinator at the front.
Okay.
And then also the second one that will be given to our rotary staff that work the line there so that they can input what they're unloading.
So I don't have to write down the card where it is?
Right, exactly. No more car counting.
You, I am.
He's sold.
I'll take two. Oh, sorry. That's copyright.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, a little recess and reconvene at 7 o'clock in the council chamber. 7 o'clock, we call tonight's meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation given by myself, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones. If you would, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge to American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and
Public hearing number one. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a communication tower on Point 026 acres located at 1826 Lakeway Drive. The applicant is proposing to build a telecommunication facility with an 85-foot tall monopole and operational equipment, which will be surrounded by a concrete masonry wall and live screening. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. Available for questions is Richard Ludke, Planning Director, and also Doug Henderson from Craftman Communications is present to speak before the city council.
Okay. Nobody to be speaking, so.
Richard's here to answer any questions and Mr. Henderson is here to address the council.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? No? We have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I believe, Mr. Henderson, did you want to speak before the council?
That's fine. Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, the second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, counselor?
Ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a communication tower in approximately Point 026 acres, legally described as a portion of Lot 2R1, Block A, Waters Ridge Edition, Phase 2, located at 1826 Lakeway Drive and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer severability penalty in an effective date declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number two. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the redevelopment and redesign of an auto display, sales, outdoor, and repair facility on 4.54 acres located at 1515 South Stemmons Freeway. This SUP is to modify the exterior elevations and signage of a Mitsubishi dealership due to the acquisition of Mitsubishi by Renault-Nissan. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as.
The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have available for questions Richard Lukey, Planning Director, and Brian Cooper. I'm sorry, we also have Leon Chester, all are available for questions.
Okay. Does anybody have questions of anyone here? Okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. You have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for an, for an auto displays, display, sales, outdoor, and repair facility on approximately 4.54 acres legally described as Lot 1R Block A Saturn Edition located at 1515 South Simmons Freeway and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Our first speaker is Jeff Pullman. Mr. Pullman, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Pullman, 1565.
If you could come up to the microphone, sir.
Jeff Pullman, 1565 West Main Street, Street 208 Louisville.
Okay.
That's my business that I'm speaking about, not my house. You need my house also?
That's fine.
Okay. Ready to go?
Go ahead.
Make sure that it's five minutes. Thank you, Mayor and Council for letting me speak. This is in reference to a citation that I received at my business. It has to do with, a definition, has to do with what you said in ordinance in April of 13 called storage. I am a, in fact, probably everybody in this room has been to my store, I recognize all the faces, you know me as UPS store, send my parcels. Good to see Rudy and Bob again, they were just in front of my house in October for a little meeting for the neighborhood. The city has defined storage and outside storage in such a way that they have now instructed me, and I'm told that all 10 U-Hauls and probably all the Hertz Penske's, and I can go on the list, I've got a long presentation for you, I'm going to do it here in my five minutes, but basically you go out of business, and it's based on your definition of outside storage. And I would contend that what I have is called truck sharing. I don't have storage in my store of trucks, not one of them is there longer than five days, but somebody has written up a violation and sent our wonderful Tim out, who is a fantastic guy, I'm going to plug for him right now, but sent him out and told me to cease and desist, and I guess you're kind of half interested in watching $36,000 of my tax base go away and all the rest of the U-Hauls. So I would ask that you would reconsider the definition that is there in section 17, whatever it is, I'm not worried about right now, I'll make the formal presentation next month if you like, but right now I find it very punishing to tell me to go out of business.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions I need to answer, no?
All right. Any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to have Richard Lukey, he's our planning manager, and he can meet with you and give you his card and try to work through this.
Sure, sure, cool.
He's coming over here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor, our next speaker is Iram Ali. If you can please state your name and address for the record.
I might have to stand on my tippy toes here. I'm Iram Ali, 1456 Ashby Drive, Louisville, Texas, 75067. I'm here tonight as a member of the Huffines Middle School PTA and a concerned parent. As you know, back in January, there was an unfortunate accident in front of our school on Valley Parkway, before you get to Old Orchard, where two children were struck at that crosswalk where the green belt is. And like I said, it was an accident, accidents happen, but it's been a troublesome spot for years, I mean, pretty much the entire time. I've lived in Louisville, I've had three kids go through Huffines, my eldest is now at LHS, and my twins are in seventh grade at Huffines, so it's a drive I make twice a day, every day, sometimes more, I'm also the band booster president, so, I mean, I'm a fixture at Huffines, I know that like the back of my hand, that stretch. And I saw last month that the city was really proactive, I had reached out to TJ and Brandon about this accident when it happened, and we now have a stop sign and flashing lights before you get to the crosswalk, which has been amazing. I'm noticing that parents and other drivers are pausing and taking that time now to really stop, before it was like a game of Frogger. So I'm here tonight to request that if we could do the same on Old Orchard between Valley and Valley Ridge, before you get to Valley Ridge, there's that basketball court and the green belt kind of continues, there's a crosswalk there as well where, again, the kids are just kind of running back and forth, and again, it's like a game like Frogger. Some of these middle schoolers look like elementary school kids, they're tiny, I know when I'm driving my Chevy Tahoe, I can't see them. It's also very blinding in the afternoons and in the mornings, just the way the sun is, there's nothing there to break up that line of vision, and I find myself doing this pretty much every day. And, you know, we can't control someone driving responsibly, it just takes one second to look down, and unfortunately, you never know when the child is going to, you know, meet the end of the car like it happened in January, so I would just like this, if something could be done about implementing either push button lights or the same flashing lights and stop sign on Old Orchard between Valley and Valley Ridge like we did on Valley in front of the Cambridge Apartments, I think that could do a lot to keep our kids safe and.
I did need to ask one question.
Mm-hmm.
This isn't a cross street or anything, is it?
It's not a cross street.
But it is walking and it's blocked.
Exactly, it, there's that green belt and the basketball court, and it's just kind of like the little cut in the curb and across, yeah, it's not a cross street, it's Park Ridge Estates is the subdivision, that kind of, that spillway, I don't know what you call it, but the, like the water spillway by the basketball court where the green belt then continues, and it goes on behind Summit and all that, but.
It is, it is marked crosswalk, so.
Yeah.
What was it?
I said it is a marked crosswalk, so.
Yeah, it's a marked crosswalk, there's just not anything that really draws your attention and makes that driver think, okay, I need to slow down, I need to stop during school times, it's just, I just see cars. I actually lived in that neighborhood for 15 years before I moved, I still own a home there, my rental home, I've got tenants that have kids that go to these schools, so that neighborhood and those kids are, like my kids are very near and dear to my heart, those could be my children. So I would just like to see if we could maybe consider upping the safety factor at that point also. Thank you.
Hold on just a second.
I wanted to have David Solomon go meet with, with Mr. Ali, thank you.
Okay. Just speak to this gentleman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I believe our next speaker may have the same concerns if Mr. Solomon wanted to wait.
Okay. David, hold on just a second.
Our next speaker is Taron Hicks. Sir, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes.
And if you have, if exactly the same place, same?
Yes, sir.
If, if you want to go ahead and do it, that's fine, if you want to go with them and talk to the city staff?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to just say a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, Taron Hicks, 1124 Taylor Lane, Louisville, Texas, 75077. First off, thank you all. Thank you, city, for being on top of it, for jumping out, for putting up the signs. I do feel a little bit safer for our children. We do have, as the PTA president, we do have over 830 kids that attend that school, most of them are walkers, believe it or not. So our concern is, is that those babies are protected, they're, I feel they're my babies just as if they come out of 1124, but I've noticed that, that's why I love women, because they always cover everything that a man would forget. So Iram has just said just about everything that I wanted to say, but if we could do the lights, and if you consider, could consider that, that would be a great plus, because I have a sixth grader that's there, so you know, I'm not going anywhere for a couple of more years, and we see a lot of people that jog, take that, take that route around the green belt, so, but again, I must say thank you all, thank you, thank you, thank you for TJ and Neil for answering my phone call late night and taking it. Mayor, I need you to stay healthy, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
And if you'd give us, David and, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor received no cards.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Flip through a couple of pages here. Okay, now we're down to reports, Nika. Okay, well, let's go on down. Tim? Russ?
Reminder, Mayor, we're hosting our Coffee with Cops tomorrow, it'll be at the Waterburger at Southwest Parkway in 121 between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Hope it's a good turnout tomorrow. Yes?
The lake level is 525 feet.
Hit the button.
Hold it down. Oh, okay, thank you. The lake level is 525 feet, that's three feet above conservation, and they are currently releasing about 4,500 CFS.
And that's three feet higher than last month? Something like that?
I'm not sure. If they are releasing.
What? What was it last month? Oh.
It was below conservation.
Right. Okay, well, it's more than three feet, excuse me. Okay, yes. Eric? Okay.
Well, speaking of crosswalks and watching out for kids, next week is spring break, so be careful, there's a lot of kids out there that they're going to be riding their bicycles and roaming around the city all hours of the day, so be, be careful of that, and I think most of it's going to be nice weather, so they will be out and about.
Yes, it will be spring break, I can't wait, because I'm on spring break as well. I just want to take this time on the council to thank the staff for the, our council retreat last week, it was very informative, it was a lot of fun, if anybody cares to watch it and see who had the best presentation, I think Brent did, did the best job, he, he, outshined us all, but it was a great, great effort, I know you guys do a lot of work, and I just wanted to thank you.
And got a lot accomplished.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Covering a lot of ground. Well, with spring break comes spring, and if you have an opportunity, get out to Leela, we have kayak tours, bird walks, we've got an unplugged spring break camp over, from the 12th to the 16th, we've got Saturdays at the cabin, it's just, I can't think of a better place to spend the weekend outdoors with great weather, so get out to Leela.
Okay, you have any thoughts?
Yes, Mayor, Eric and I had the pleasure of going to Waco last week to watch Ms. Anaya pass the gavel at her traps meeting, and I wanted to just put it on the record how impressive she is outside of the wall, I mean, she's impressive here, but we had no idea the reputation she had until we got there, but it, it reminds me the level of reputation and expertise that all of the directors in this organization bring to the table, because every one of them is leading in their organizations outside, so congratulations to Ms. Anaya, and I am pleased to work alongside all of you.
Okay, thank you. Neil?
My turn. Thank you, Mayor. So MCO Grand Texas Tunes continues with Josh Greider on March 10th, Black Box Concert Series the next night with Emily Scott Robinson, March 11th, and a stand-up comedy show by De Lorenzo Marquez on March 16th. Public events, we have Hope for Tomorrow Conference, that's presented by the Denton Area Caregivers Alzheimer's Association, and then 2018 Keep Louisville Beautiful Garden Secrets class, do-it-yourself Rain Barrel is March 15th. Acoustic jam's always on Friday night, usually in the art gallery, and I keep telling you, if you haven't been, you would be amazed at the quality of, of the music these people do. Art exhibits, LISD's District Art Show through April 14th in the main gallery, and Sam Ivey Monochromatic, an exhibit that opened on March 9th in the North Quarter, and that's all I have, sir, thank you, other than to thank staff for all the hard work on the, the retreat, it was a first-class operation.
Okay.
I, I too want to compliment the staff on a terrific retreat, so, thank you.
Okay. Counselor? You don't have something going tomorrow?
The March primaries tomorrow, not technically ours, but we will be voting in a number of city locations, so if anyone has not voted yet and you do not know where you need to go vote tomorrow, please contact our office and we'll be happy to help you.
Okay, thank you. It'll be a fun day. Yeah, Officer, thanks for your service to the community. Thank you. With that, we don't have a closed session?
No.
Next item we have is a motion to adjourn, we don't have a closed session.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Good night.